Mr. Clerk, please call the robe.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Balensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer Starr, Mr. Chair Yevakorn.
Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
Motion by Councilmember Hairston that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with, and the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
All right, we will now go to public comment. I want to remind all members that please turn around to acknowledge the speakers. Remind all speakers that you have three minutes to finish your remarks. When you see the yellow light, that means please wrap up. And we're going to go ahead and get started with Basma Hamid from Ward 13. The topic is ceasefire in Gaza, not representing anyone, not being paid by anyone. Is Basa Hamid here? You have the floor.
Assalamualaikum. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Imagine you have a premature baby that has to stay in an incubator for some time at the hospital. And suddenly, the doctor comes and tells you that your baby is not going to live much longer due to lack of oxygen and shortage of formula at all hospitals in Gaza due to the cutting off of all supplies to life necessities, including, but not limited to, water, food, fuel, electricity, and committing war crimes to the whole enclave of Gaza by the Zionist state called Israel, which puts the whole population of 2.5 million citizens in Gaza on a death row. And that's not all. The bombs of illegal white phosphores supplied by the U.S. being dropped like grain day and night to kill as many innocent unarmed people as possible, including women, men, and children by the hundreds, and cause the most damage possible. Here in Cleveland, we have life necessities to live, Alhamdulillah, thanks to God. But safety in Cleveland is omitted. It is number one in the state and number 147 in the nation that lacks safety. Instead of sending our tax money overseas to kill children in cold blood in Gaza and Palestine, in my opinion, it should be spent here to fix the problems of drugs, alcohol, addiction, homelessness, poverty, homicide, robberies, gun control. Cleveland does not stand with Israel. Mayor Bibb, when you say that Cleveland stands for Israel, you are just speaking for yourself. When we come to all of these protests, we do not feel 100% safe because of all the people around us thinking we are terrorists and want to hurt us when we have done nothing to them. They hate us. They hate us all because of you, Mayor Bibb. You won't be human enough to stay on the side of humanity. In my opinion, our city council thinks that Cleveland is so perfect and all the problems are fixed. It is such a safe city that it could afford up to $10 million of our tax dollars to send overseas to kill more and more children in Gaza and Palestine and participate in establishing an apartheid state in Palestine by committing genocide. Unfortunately, my vote and donations went to the wrong people running for office positions. Now the truth has prevailed and lies are diminishing. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. Thank you.
Next, we have Riley Petro. Riley Petro is from Ward 17, and he wants to talk about a proposal to limit public comment. He's from the Party for Socialism and Liberation, Northeast Ohio, Anderson Coalition, and he is not being paid by anyone. Riley, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on the issues of proposed changes to public comment. As the second most populous city in Ohio, it's almost inconceivable that the ability for the public to make comment at city council was only implemented two years ago. Since that time, some on this council have appeared to become less concerned with hearing the concerns of their constituents and neighbors and more about saving face. On a September 25 meeting, Chris Martin had his microphone cut off for reading a list of council members and the campaign contributions they received, ostensibly for, quote, "impugning their character," unquote. This action and the rule that those making public comment may only address council as a whole and not an individual council member have been challenged as violating citizens' First Amendment rights. And this council's own legal team agrees that the current rules, quote, "may raise some First Amendment concerns," unquote. Yet despite these concerns, some on this council have decided they wish to double down and further restrict public comment. Some on this council have asserted that the newly proposed rule to limit comment to a single item under discussion by council is about, quote, "preserving decorum," unquote. But when dozens of commenters have come asking for their public officials to retract their own public statements supporting Israel, and these officials refuse to address them, what effect would this rule have? When citizens present council with a resolution to call for a ceasefire in Gaza and council does not take it under discussion, what does this new rule do other than silence them? Your calls for decorum are hollow. And in the words of Martin Luther King, "You seek a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, instead of a positive peace, which is the presence of justice." That being said, I would like to take the time to acknowledge Councilwoman Maurer for speaking strongly against further restrictions on public comment, as well as my Ward Representative, Councilman Sly, for raising public concerns and corresponding with me personally regarding this issue. However, for anyone on this council who would vote for any such proposal, let it be known that you may try to silence our voice at city council meetings, but you cannot silence the voice of the united masses. Thank you, and free Palestine.
Next, we have Robin Beth Sher from Oberlin. And Robin Beth Sher is here to support the Jewish and Palestinian community near Northeast Ohio. She's not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone. You have the floor.
I'm here to ask you to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. For many of us, there is much learning and unlearning necessary to see this moment clearly. As an American Jew, I was raised to love Israel with a glorious story of a land without a people. For a people without a land, a lie. I was not told the full truth, as you yourselves may not have been either. But there is no shame in realizing we've been told half a story. The shame is in refusing the whole story. As a Jew, it is not betrayal to lay Israel's history bare. It is not self-hatred to want freedom for Palestinians. And it is most definitely not antisemitism to condemn Israel's government. No government should be immune from critique, especially one ruled by a violent and oppressive regime. It is not in spite of my Jewishness that I support the Palestinian cause, but precisely because of it. The guiding tenets of Judaism are to love the stranger, to treat our neighbor as ourselves, and to work toward Takun alum, healing the world. Everything about the treatment of the Palestinians by the Israeli government violates those tenets. All of this death and destruction in Gaza is the opposite of healing the world. Our Jewish teachings tell us that whoever destroys a human has destroyed a whole world, and whoever saves one human has saved a whole world. As Jews, our own history is riddled with massacres that sheared millions of limbs from our family trees and decimated future generations. In Gaza, over 13,000 people have been killed since October 7th, thousands and thousands of children. Think of all the lives that will never be led, the inventions and artwork we will never know, all the family lines erased. Whatever your interests in the region may be, whether financial, religious, cultural, the best way to protect them is through equitable solutions. We cannot bomb our way to safety. The futures of Jews and Palestinians are bound together. It is not either or. When we erase each other, we erase ourselves. We will only survive together. The best way to support both our peoples is by preventing Israel from going down a genocidal path from which there is no return.
Thank you. Next, we have Graham Ball. Graham Ball is from Cleveland Heights. He's here to talk about justice, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening. I am here before you on the 45th day of the genocide in Gaza. More than 13,000 Palestinians have been killed, including more than 200 healthcare workers and 50 journalists. 1.6 million Palestinians have been forcibly removed from their homes, the literal definition of ethnic cleansing, and the making of a second Nakba. Some council members in this body say in the media that these are international issues and they're not Cleveland concerns. I'm here to tell you about Barah Abu Elash. Barah came to Northeast Ohio as a foreign exchange student, joining the 2014 class of Cleveland Heights High School. She was in the AFS Club. She was in our vocal music department where she sang with me in our choir. When she graduated from Heights, she went back to Egypt. She went to Egypt to study medicine, where she graduated just recently and returned to her home in northern Gaza, where she and her siblings were killed last month in an Israeli airstrike. She, I never really got to know her very well, but I spoke with her several times. And she was very sweet. She was always very stylish. She was a member of our community and of the Heights family. She sang our tradition songs. She lived in our neighborhood. She was my classmate and my peer. And she was 26 years old. We grieve for her. So you do not get to say that this is not a Cleveland concern, that this does not affect our community or our city. I want to thank you, Councilmember Marr, for your statement calling for a ceasefire. We appreciate your integrity. I understand that many of you here are remaining silent because you are politicians, and the age-old political wisdom is to avoid this subject at all costs. But I'm here to tell you that that wisdom is outdated. The conversation has shifted, and your political calculus must change as well. More than 80% of Democrats now support a ceasefire in Gaza. And in Generation Z, 70% of American voters under 35 oppose the Biden administration's handling of this genocide. My generation understands intersectional struggle. We know that our liberation cannot be separated from the liberation of all oppressed people around the world. We know that the same tear gas used on me and my peers in the streets of Cleveland after the killing of George Floyd is deployed on the streets of Ebron and in Ramallah and in Gaza. We know that freedom and safety for one group of people cannot come at the expense of subjugating another group of people. We know that opposition to antisemitism and opposition to Islamophobia go hand in hand, that each stem from the same systems of white supremacy. We know that the United States is giving political cover, lethal aid, and unconditional support to the Israeli government, which is enabling their war crimes and genocidal actions. As conscientious citizens of American empire, we cannot stay silent while our elected representatives in Washington and Ohio enable the mass killing of civilians overseas. As members of the political establishment, you all have an obligation to speak up as individuals or as council and call for a ceasefire. Free Palestine.
Next, we have Josiah Quarles. Josiah Quarles is from Cleveland Heights. He's here to talk about the housing crisis, and he's representing Neoc, and he is not being paid by anyone. Mr. Quarles, you have the floor. 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 Thank you.
I'd like to say that, obviously, I'm here to speak about something very specific and very local. But anyone who has any wisdom understands that we live in a world that is far beyond our reach. So we must think globally as we act locally. The situation in Gaza is a very, very extreme version of something that we see repeated over and over across the globe within communities, and that is the dehumanization of people. When we separate ourselves from the stranger, from someone living in a tent, someone facing eviction, we do both ourselves, that individual, and our entire community a disservice. Currently, the family shelter has been overflowed and beyond capacity since April. A rapid rehousing program is completely broken and shut down. Last week, for the first time I've ever heard of, the emergency shelter was full. This council approved $5 million for the Cleveland Housing Network for rental assistance. It is still tied up in the legal department and has been there for months. That program was supposed to start in October, and our phones are ringing off the hook with people facing evictions with nowhere to go, with families with nowhere to go. And there are $5 million sitting in this building when the portal, the employees are hired. Everything is ready to go except the city government. And if we cannot act on these very, very simple interventions, how can we work together to improve our communities in the larger ways that we need to when we're displacing people from Woodhill Homes? And we know that we do not have the source of income protections for them to allow them to take their vouchers to other places where we're demolishing Euclid Beach and displacing hundreds of people from their homes when there is no affordable housing for them to land? We have to move with expediency and understand the value of human beings, their lives, and their values. Just because they are not within our sight does not mean they do not exist. And the more we deny that, the more people will press their existence upon you, and you may not like it.
Next, we have Lucy Rose Schiffman, and she's from Beechwood. And she is here to talk about the topic of Israel and Palestine. And she's representing JVP, and she is not being paid by anyone.
Hello. Sorry. My name is Lucy Schiffman, and I was born and raised in the Cleveland Jewish community. For me, this meant going to and graduating from a Jewish day school, attending Beechwood High School, which at the time was 85% Jewish, being on the regional board for the largest Jewish youth movement, leaving for college and the Peace Corps, and choosing to come back to work for the Jewish community. It meant going to Israel four times before the age of 22, one of which on a trip called March of the Living, where I spent a week in Poland, walking the path with 200 Holocaust survivors and 10,000 Jews from Auschwitz to Birkenau before heading to Jerusalem to dance in the streets. This trip solidified my desire for freedom, to never again see the pain and suffering that a Holocaust causes, never again for me and never again for anyone. These trips made me feel proudly Jewish. But I never questioned how on not one of these experiences was I invited to meet with and learn from Palestinians. It wasn't until I was 23 years old and participating in an anti-racist organizer training that I learned about the Nakba, known as the catastrophe to Palestinians or what I had always celebrated as Yom HaAtsmoot, Israel's Independence Day. I am here today to encourage you to educate yourselves in a way that I have been trying to do for the last four years. I no longer take information blindly from sources I trust, but instead question the common narratives that I know so well. I have always been proud to be Jewish and a Jew from Cleveland. I am grateful that I was raised in such a strong Jewish community with such strong Jewish values because it makes me feel safe. I'm here today because I can't stand by as my community continues to act in ways that take away the safety of millions of others. I'm here today because I believe in a future where all people, Jews and Muslims and Palestinians, feel safe. I believe in a future where hostages are returned to their families and children are free to go to school and play outside. I know that this future does not come from the continued war. I know this future does not come from the blind support of a government whose own people have been protesting their actions for months and years. I'm here to encourage you, the City Council of Cleveland, to acknowledge that there are Jews around the world and here in Cleveland who stand against Hamas, but also do not stand with Israel and their bombs against Gaza. I'm here to ask you to acknowledge the massive loss of life we are seeing every day in Gaza. I'm here to ask you to honor the Jewish value of life, to recognize that if saving one life means saving the world, what does it mean to save a million lives? I'm asking you to join with other brave leaders in calls for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Next, we have Ash Guy Singh, and he is from Cleveland Heights. And he's here to talk about the safety of workers and local communities. He is representing Starbucks Workers United and not being paid by anyone.
To Council President and Council, my name is Akshay Singh. I'm a resident of Cleveland Heights. I work at Starbucks in your district, I believe, Council President, across from the Hillel, the Jewish center for Case Western Reserve University. I'm a member of Starbucks Workers United. I'm also a member of Democratic Socialists of America. Both of these organizations have put out statements signing on to Jewish Voice for Peace and calling for a ceasefire. These are both reflective of the over 75% of Democrats who support a ceasefire across the nation. I'm here with my Palestinian union members in my heart. I began actually practicing in a reconstructionist Jewish temple four years ago after moving my partner at the time back from Pittsburgh after the attacks on the Tree of Life synagogue. Recently, our temple here in Cleveland signed on for the Jewish Voice for Peace statement. And I and other members joined a mourners' kaddish in D.C. on the Capitol lawn. I have fellow congregants in my heart and people who are here telling you also that ethnic cleansing is not a Jewish value, nor does it secure the return of innocent Jews to their families, nor does it make Jewish people safer here in this country. Especially if you're thinking about those families in Israel who've been, whose members were taken hostage, who've been explicitly protesting their government and the war that has been carried out in their name unjustly. I'm also a soccer coach. I've worked in Slavic Village eight years at A.B. Hart in Fullerton. I thank Councilwoman Maurer, council's only Jewish member, for calling for a ceasefire. I'm here with Palestinian footballers in my heart from Cleveland, the best footballers who I've ever met in my life. My friend Mo Mahanid, whose 60-year-old parents have been fleeing safe house to safe house in Gaza. I don't know, but we don't know if they're alive. To my friend Zain, who gave me this kaffiyah on my birthday, whose family in the West Bank face ethnic cleansing right now. Democracies from Mexico to New Zealand, Brazil to Ireland, France to South Africa have made this call, democracies have made this call for a ceasefire, for the return of hostages and the end of ongoing genocidal actions unfolding against the Palestinian people. This body, Cleveland City Council, can, should, and must pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire. I wear this hoodie, this number 48, which is for 1948. My family, my grandfather was decimated in attacks in partition India. My family has been through partition. We have seen the horrors of partition. And this body can recognize, if in a moment, that the Palestinian people have also been treated to the horrors of partition, and something should be said. Thank you.
Next, we have Dennis Ashton. Dennis Ashton is from Euclid, and he's here to talk about homelessness. He represents Neoc, and he is not being paid by anyone. Mr. Ashton.
I greet everyone. My name is Dennis Ashton. He/him pronouns. I'm here in Cleveland in the streets. I'm an outreach worker, the street outreach. We have a lot of people in here facing the same thing that they do over Bosnian everywhere, you know? But it's right here, right here in front of our face. If you ride the streets of Cleveland, you see the homeless. You see tents, and people, oh, a tent, you know? And we have money tied up where we can't even open a shelter for a woman and a kid sleeping in a car. What can she do? What can she do? If we report her, they're going to take the kids. And, you know, that's no good. That's the problem. It comes from the beginning. And the way we, a child is brought up in this world with not a lot of education, this is what he or she finds out. And I think it's a horrible type thing that we have people like that, you know? It's a horrible thing that I have to go home and wake up in a storm. You know, I'm nice and comfortable, got my TV. I'm cool, you know? But there's people out in the streets that's trying to find warm, sleeping on the concrete on the grates of Cleveland, Ohio. This is a shame. It's a real shame. We should really, really have that money and anything else resources. I mean, the Browns, we're going to build the walkway, I think. I don't even know what it is. You know what I'm saying? That's cool. It didn't take but a minute, you know what I'm saying? But to house people, to build affordable housing, that's not happening. We haven't built one, I think, in three years, you know? And that doesn't leave any chance. People lose hope, and that's the worst thing in the world, to lose hope. Everybody's qualified. Everybody should have a home to go to. And it's just not happening here. And I can't understand the money that's being spent on different things, for the city, for Public Square, this place, that place. But we have nothing for the homeless, you know? And that's a shame. That's a real shame. And with that, thank you.
Next, we have Brian Howser. Brian Howser is from Shaker Heights. He wants to speak about ceasefire in Gaza. He's not representing anyone, and he is not being paid by anyone.
I'm here as a Jew. Last spring, I sat at my grandparents' table for Passover and read from our old children's hagadah. We reflected on the Exodus, the deliverance of the Jewish people from their enslavement to the Promised Land. It's a powerful story testifying to the birth of a free people. It's little wonder that Exodus was invoked to narrate the founding of the modern state of Israel. In this modern Exodus, the Jews are delivered from the horrors of the Holocaust and once again to the Promised Land. But this telling erases the Nakba, the displacement and dispossession of 3/4 of a million Palestinian people from their cities and villages in 1948. The Nakba was foundational, for you cannot have a democratic Jewish state in a majority Palestinian land without excluding the Palestinians, so militias made them refugees. I mention the Nakba because Israeli leaders are mentioning the Nakba after decades of Nakba denial. They mention it aspirationally. One minister said, "We're rolling out the Gaza Nakba." A Knesset member called for a Nakba that will overshadow the Nakba of '48. The deputy speaker of the Knesset invoked the Nakba to suggest mass forced migration of Gazans. In The New Yorker, an Israeli historian of the Holocaust finds in these references, quote, "clear intent of ethnic cleansing." Countless Israeli leaders are telling us explicitly they won't abide the continued existence of Gazans in Gaza. They say, and I quote, "Gaza should be erased. Flatten the strip. Burn Gaza now." To legitimate their total war, they repeatedly claimed all Gazans are combatants. From a liberal legislator, quote, "The children of Gaza have brought this on themselves." We hear, "Doesn't Israel have the right to defend itself?" The murder of Israeli civilians on October 7th was horrifying. I feel the acute pain and fear that so often accompany that question from Jews living within the shadow of antisemitism. But what I hear in the words of Israeli leaders is not defense. And forget those words. Use your eyes. The scale of the killing in Gaza, its indiscriminate nature, the carpet bombing, the targeting of schools and hospitals on the flimsiest of pretexts, none of this serves the safety or defense or survival of Jewish people in Israel or elsewhere. I refuse to be silent while my heritage is weaponized to justify the killing of thousands. It shames us. American Jews increasingly reject the story that these war crimes are required to guarantee Jewish safety and survival. Rather, they accelerate the cycle of violence that endangers all of us. Nobody is free until everybody is free. That's Fannie Lou Hamer. You've been asked to call for a ceasefire. The vast majority of Americans want it. The vast majority of Americans want it. The longer you wait, the greater our collective shame. Free Palestine.
Last up, we have Estelle Raskin. Estelle Raskin is from Ward Fifteen, and she's here to talk about Gaza. She is not representing anyone, not being paid by anyone. Ms. Raskin.
I'm coming forward as a Jewish person in support of an immediate ceasefire. I am not here to tell you what you already know, the death tolls in Gaza and Israel, the worsening conditions caused by the siege and the blockade, the hostages, the numbers of children dead, and the unaccounted four bodies buried under rubble. What you may not know due to unmonolithic rhetoric that is being weaponized to cause more violence is this: antisemitism is a real, lived experience that is not, I repeat, it is not the voicing of dissent against systematic state violence. As a Cleveland constituent, I am here to tell you that your messaging is making me, a Jewish American, an immigrant, and a descendant of Holocaust survivors feel scared and intimidated into silence. My great-grandparents, with their children in tow, fled from Nazi-occupied Ukraine, Belarus, and Poland. Calling out state violence and asking for a ceasefire to be rendered as antisemitic is a reprehensible, silencing political strategy that has to stop now. I feel alienated and outraged by the hijacking of antisemitism. This redefinition deflects from actual harm. It is a gag order that incapacitates and immobilizes me from speaking and acting with my moral judgment and principles to demand the end of the indiscriminate murder of innocent civilians. How will you protect me from actual antisemitism when you are being complicit in the perversion of that term? How will you protect your Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim constituents from anti-Palestinian hate and Islamophobia when speaking out for their own safety is construed as antisemitism? Peaceful anti-war protests with Palestinians and Jews standing together have been deemed as hate crimes, and so has any criticism of the Israeli government's carte blanche response to the attacks of October 7th. As a Jewish American, it is incumbent upon me to voice my outrage at how my tax dollars are being spent to wage war and kill thousands of children. If the very core of my Judaism isn't to stand beside the oppressed because doing so is antisemitic, then I am utterly lost and confounded by my identity. If my safety means that others should be harmed, I am lost. You do not get to justify the use of violence in my name or the name of my ancestors, and I refuse to succumb to the political tactics of silence at the cost of precious lives. Palestinian lives are precious. Muslim and Arab lives are precious. Israeli and Jewish lives are precious. My very history positions me to speak to you today. I am a Jewish American, an immigrant, and a Clevelander, and you are my representatives. I implore you to demand a ceasefire now.
Mr. Clerk, please share communications.
File number, file number one-three-three-five-dash-twenty-two-three from Council President Blaine A. Griffin, designated without objection by Council Allen Dryer, the Civil Clerk for Council for Council, for all matter of the time, the cup since November fourteenth and November fifteenth.
Just keep reading.
File number five-three-four-six-dash-twenty-two-three, the Council President Blaine Griffin, designated without objection by Council, Allen Dryer, the Civil Clerk for Council for all matter of the time, the cup since November fourteenth and November fifteenth. File number one-three-three-six-dash-twenty-two-three, file number six-five-six for two-point-seven, Council for the South District for D-one, D-two, D-three, D-three-A, D-six, file number eleven-seventeen, L-D, D-eight, D-nine, D-twelve, D-fourteen.
Communications done. Done with communications. Keep it moving. Condolences resolutions.
Resolutions of condolence for Councilmember Conwell, Resolution number thirteen-four-seven dash twenty-two-three for Purcell Davis. For Councilman Conwell, Resolution number thirteen-four-eight dash twenty-two-three, for paid, for potential military.
Are there any other condolences? Any other condolences? Are there any other condolences? For Councilmembers, please rise for a moment of silence. Are there any congratulatory resolutions?
Congratulations.
Are there any congratulatory resolutions?
Resolution number one-three-four-nine dash twenty-two-three for Dr. Victoria Anhakabi. Resolutions of recogitation for Councilmember Griffin. Resolution number thirteen-fifty dash twenty-two-three for Russell T. A. D. W., an achievement with stars of gale and celebration. Resolutions of appreciation for Councilmember Griffin. Resolution number thirteen-fifty-one dash twenty-two-three for Sanjita Bhatt. For Councilmember Griffin, Resolution number thirteen-fifty-two dash twenty-two-three for Morton Aron.
Just keep reading, first reading of emergency resolutions. Just keep moving.
Or this number thirteen-seven dash twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. The ordinance ordering to authorize in the Director of City planning to enter a mandate to.
Keep reading it out.
Star zero-zero-one-eight for change current field operations LLC.
Keep reading it out.
To extend the contract for additional year, additional services required by the city, and to amend the name of the consultant agency for field operations LLC.
Let's keep reading.
To field operations LLC. Or this number thirteen-thirty-eight dash twenty-two-three by Councilmember Starr McCormick, Bishop and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Health to apply for and accept grants from Case Western Reserve University for the public health training for Northeast Ohio Workforce Program. Or this number one-three-four-zero-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Palantic and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Directors of Public Safety of Law to apply for and accept grants from the County Public Safety and Justice Services for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Stop Violence Against Women Act program for sexual assault advocate and for the law enforcement and prosecution components of the Cleveland Domestic Violence Program.
Keep reading now.
And authorizing one or more contracts with the Cleveland Lake Plaza Center and other entities to implement the grant. Or this number one-three-four-three-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember McCormick, Bishop and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to apply for and accept funding in the Bedrock Development Project, A.A., Cleveland, Cleveland, Florida. Determining the method of making the public improvement, authorizing the Director to enter to one or more contracts to construct an incremental improvement, authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to acquire, accept, and report real property and essential improvement, and authorizing other agreements.
Keep reading it out.
Or this number one-three-three-four-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Economic Development to create the Job Creation Income Tax Credit Incentive Program to provide economic development incentives for the purpose of creating jobs and improving the economic welfare of the people of the city, as authorized in Article Eight, Section Thirteen of the Ohio Constitution.
Keep reading them.
Or this number one-three-five-three-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Griffin. An emergency ordinance to amend Section Nineteen, to amend Section one-ninety-eight-point-oh-one of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as enacted by Ordis number two-nine-seven-dash-twenty-two-three past June fifth, twenty-twenty-three relating to the definition of the city financial assistance.
First reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution number one-three-four-one-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Casey. An emergency resolution objected to the transfer of ownership of a D-five and D-six liquor permit to one-three-nine-three-two Twiscott Road. Resolution number one-three-four-two-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Harsh. An emergency resolution objected to the transfer of ownership and location of a D-one, D-two, D-three, D-three-A, and D-six liquor permit to forty-eight-ninety-six Pearl Road.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
A motion by Councilmember Harrison that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House, Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palantic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yes, Mr. Chairman.
Call the roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House, Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palantic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yes.
Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Or this number one-two-three-four-dash-twenty-two-three as amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter a grant agreement with Urban Bridges doing visits as envisioned in Cleveland, or as designated to provide economic development assistance to partially finance construction of a vocational training center. Or this number one-one-nine-five-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to sell city-owned air rights interest no longer needed for the city's public use located on Detroit Avenue in addition to the West Boulevard-Cudell Rapid Transit Station to Flaherty and Collins Development LLC for future residential development. Or this number one-one-eight-seven-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers McCormick, Bishop, Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to apply for and accept a grant from the United States Department of Transportation for the reconnecting Cleveland I-Ninety program, and authorizing the Director to employ one or more professional consultants to implement the grant. Or this number one-oh-two-two-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Section one-three-point-oh-seven of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as amended by Ordis number twelve-six-six-six-dash-oh-two passed January twenty-seventh, twenty-oh-three, relating to enhancing the city's ability to address nuisance properties. Or this number one-oh-eight-eight-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers McCormick, Bishop, Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance giving the consent of the City of Cleveland to the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio to demolish and remove the Eagle Avenue Lift Bridge over the Cuyahoga River in the City of Cleveland, authorizing agreements and causing payment to the state for the city's share of the improvement. Or this number one-one-five-eight-dash-twenty-two-three is amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter a grant agreement with Serenity Health and Wellness Corporation to provide economic development assistance to partially finance renovation of its youth home and behavioral health facility. Or this number one-one-eight-nine-dash-twenty-two-three as amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with Building and Construction Initiative or Designate to provide economic development assistance to partially finance completion of renovation of commercial space for training in the construction trades. Or this number twelve-five-five-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Bishop and Harrison, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing that the Director of Public Works executed a deed of easement granting to the Rest Creek Conservancy or the entity identified to accept conservation easements for certain easement rights in the property located at the Cleveland Enterprise Park in the Village of Highland Hills, and declaring that the easement rights granted are not needed for public use, and authorizing the city to enter to one or more agreements with the West Creek Conservancy or the NAI identified to accept conservation easements to administer the conservation easement. Or this number one-two-seven-oh-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Conwell, Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to supplement Ordis number one-oh-seven-four-dash-twenty-two-one passed December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, to add a new eleventh whereas clause relating to one or more grant agreements with Hitchcock Center for Women, Inc. to support the construction of a new residential treatment facility at twelve-twenty-seven Ansel Road. Or this number twelve-seventy-one-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmembers Harrison, Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Community Development to apply for and accept one or more grants from the city's for Financial Empowerment Fund, the Cleveland Citywide Development Corporation, and other public or private entities for the Bank On Fellowship Program. Or this number one-two-eight-seven-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance on behalf of the Cleveland Municipal Court to enter to one or more contracts with the Cuyahoga County Public Defender Commission for the legal services necessary to defend interested defendants charged with violation of ordinances of the City of Cleveland that may result in incarceration for the Cleveland Municipal Court for a period of one year, with one option to renew for an additional consecutive year exercisable for the Director of Finance. Or this number one-two-nine-five-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Community Development to apply for and accept one or more grants from the city's for Financial Empowerment Fund, the Cleveland Citywide Development Corporation, and other public or private entities for the Bank On Fellowship Program. Or this number one-two-eight-seven-dash-twenty-two-three by Councilmember Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance on behalf of the Cleveland Municipal Court to enter into one or more contracts with Orianna House, Inc. for professional services necessary to provide appropriate placement for defendants to be assigned and to supervise pretrial release without sanction of incarceration, and to provide related services for the Cleveland Municipal Court for a period of one year, with a one-year option to renew exercisable by the Director of Finance.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House, Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palantic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yes, Mr. Chairman.
Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House, Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palantic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have legislation to be tabled. Read the legislation to be tabled.
Or this number four-four-nine-dash-oh-eight by Councilmembers Coats, Palantic, Johnson, Cleveland, Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Section one-three-three-point-three-two-two of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as amended by Ordis number eight-two-three-dash-oh-six passed June twelfth, twenty-oh-six, relating to the rental of the Collingwood Athletic Complex. Or this number nine-four-five-dash-oh-eight by Councilmember Sweeney. An emergency ordinance to amend Section three-five-zero-point-one-zero of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as amended by Ordis number twelve-eight-two-dash-zero-six passed November twenty-seventh, two thousand and six, relating to billboards. Or this number twelve-fifty-seven-dash-oh-eight by Councilmembers Kelly, Simperman, and Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Port Control to solicit proposals from qualified firms to undertake the management, design, and development of aviation and non-aviation related services at selected Department of Port Control or city-owned properties and related facilities consistent with airports' master plan, and to enter into one or more leases or leases by way of concession for a term of thirty years with two tenure options to renew subject to additional legislative approval. Or this Resolution number sixteen-nineteen-dash-oh-eight by Councilmembers Santiago, Brady, Simperman, and Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency resolution declaring the intent to vacate a portion of West Twenty-Ninth Street. Or this number fifteen-dash-ten by Councilmember Palantic. An emergency ordinance rescinding the landmark destination of St. Joseph Christian Life Center on Lakeshore Boulevard. Or this number seven-thirty-one-dash-ten by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance changing the youth district of lands on the southeast corner of Literary Road and West Fifth Street shown on the shaded, shown shaded on the attached map to two-family residential and a B-area district, map change number twenty-three-thirteen. Or this seven-three-five-dash-ten by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance changing the youth district of lands on the northwest and northeast corners of Kenilworth and Literary Avenues at West Eleventh Street to local retail business, map change number twenty-three-thirteen. Or this number seven-three-six-dash-ten by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance changing the youth and area districts, the lands on the south side of Starkweather Avenue between St. Ticonne Street and St. Olga Street, shown on the shaded, shown shaded on the attached map to two-family residential and a B-area district, map change number twenty-three-fifteen. Or this number seventy-seven-thirty-eight-dash-ten by Councilmember Cleveland. An ordinance changing the youth district of land located on the northeast corner of Woolland Avenue and East Seventy-Fifth Street to open space and recreation, map change number twenty-three-twenty-two. Or this seven-fifty-three-dash-ten by Councilmember Mitchell. An ordinance changing the youth area and height districts of lands located on the southeast corner of Notre Dame Avenue and Mount Carmel Road to a two-family residential district, a B-area district, and a one-height district, map change number twenty-three-oh-nine. Resolution is number one-twenty-four-dash-twelve by Councilmembers Palantic, Jeffrey Johnson, Mitchell, Branca Telly, Reed, Conwell, and Brady. An emergency resolution urging the Administration Department of Public Works to study and implement a fee structure for charging non-Cleveland residents for the use of city-included recreation centers, including the Collingwood Recreation Center. Or this number eight-forty-eight-dash-twelve by Councilmember Sweeney. An emergency ordinance to amend Section five-five-five-point-one-one-one of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as amended by Ordis number twelve-ninety-one-dash-eleven passed December fifth, twenty-eleven, relating to second-hand excessively large quantities of waste. Or this number ten-eighty-dash-one-three by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located on northwest and southwest sides of Professor Avenue, West Tenth Street, Jefferson Avenue, including lands along College Avenue and Jefferson Avenue between Tremont Street and West Seventh Street, as shown shaded and outlined on the attached map, map change number twenty-four-thirty-seven. Or this number ten-eighty-one-dash-one-three by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located around West Fourteenth Street, Starkweather Avenue and Auburn Avenue, as shown on the attached map, map change number twenty-four-thirty-eight. Or this number ten-eighty-two-dash-thirteen by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Fairfield Avenue and West Eleventh Street, map change number twenty-four-thirty-nine. Or this number ten-eighty-three-dash-thirteen by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Kennilworth Avenue and West Eleventh Street, map change number twenty-four-thirty-nine. Or this number ten-eighty-three-dash-thirteen by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Kennilworth Avenue and Literary Road and West Eleventh Street, map change number twenty-four-thirty-six. Or this number ten-eighty-four-dash-thirteen by Councilmembers Simperman. An ordinance establishing pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Professor Avenue and Starkweather Avenue, as shown on the attached map, map change number twenty-four-thirty-eight. Or this number ten-eighty-two-dash-thirteen by Councilmembers Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Kennilworth Avenue and Literary Road and West Eleventh Street, map change number twenty-four-thirty-six. Or this number ten-eighty-four-dash-thirteen by Councilmembers Simperman. An ordinance establishing pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Professor Avenue and Starkweather Avenue, map change number twenty-four-forty-one. Or this number twelve-twenty-three-dash-thirteen by Councilmembers Branca Telly. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections five-oh-nine-point-oh-one, five-oh-nine-point-one-three, and five-oh-nine-point-one-nine of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as enacted by Ordis number six-thirty-four-dash-ten-dash-A passed September twenty-second, nineteen twenty-four, relating to tree planting permits and property owners' responsibility to trim or remove trees. Or this seven-ninety-seven-dash-fourteen by Councilmembers Zone and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections six-seven-six-point-oh-two and six-seven-six-point-oh-six of the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, as amended by various ordinances relating to secondhand dealers. Or this number five-ninety-eight-dash-fifteen by Councilmembers Dow, Kenneth Johnson, and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Works to enter to one or more concession agreements with the operation of concession stands at the Lee Park Baseball Field and Visitor Center with Department of Public Works for a period not to exceed three years. Or this number six-four-six-dash-fifteen by Councilmembers Dow, Kenneth Johnson, and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to supplement the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, by enacting new Section one-three-one-point-three-eight relating to an annual commemorative day to celebrate the history of Lee Park and the Negro Baseball League. Or this number seven-fifty-dash-fifteen by Councilmembers Zone and Conwell. An emergency ordinance to supplement the Codified Ordnances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six, by enacting new Section one-three-five-point-oh-four-two thereof relating to establishment of a policy with respect to bias-based profiling. Or this number four-oh-eight-dash-sixteen by Councilmember Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections thirty-seven of Ordis number three-twenty-three-dash-fifteen passed March thirtieth, twenty-fifteen, relating to compensation for various classifications. Resolution number seven-four-five-dash-seven-four-five-dash-seventeen by Councilmembers Conwell and Zone. An emergency resolution supporting and urging Mayor Jackson's administration to continue developing a public safety department policy and training program to help police officers communicate and interact effectively with people who are deaf or hard of hearing. Or this number fourteen-forty-nine-dash-seventeen by Councilmember Dow. An emergency ordinance designating the Cleveland Akron Bank Company as a Cleveland landmark. Or this number fourteen-fifty-dash-seventeen by Councilmember Dow. An emergency ordinance designating the American Multigraph Company Building as a Cleveland landmark. Or this number fourteen-fifty-two-dash-seventeen by Councilmember Jeffrey Johnson. An emergency ordinance designating the Cleveland Aquarium as a Cleveland landmark. Or this number one-nine-nine-point-one-eight by Councilmembers Zone and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the submission to the electors of the City of Cleveland for a proposal to amend Sections one-sixteen and one-twenty-six, the Charter of the City of Cleveland relating to the police force controlled by chief and division into classified and unclassified service. Resolution number three-seventy-five-dash-eighteen by Councilmember Conwell. An emergency resolution urging Mayor Jackson's administration to require special police forces to undergo racial bias and sensitivity training and report incidents of racial bias and profiling to the Department of Public Safety. Or this number one-seven-seven-dash-twenty-twenty by Councilmember Boucher Jones. Resolution number 1341-2023, by Councilmember Casey. An emergency resolution objected to the transfer of ownership of a D5 and D6 liquor permit to 13932 Twisket Road. Resolution number 1342-2023, by Councilmember Harsh. An emergency resolution objected to the transfer of ownership and location of a D1, D2, D3, D3A, and D6 liquor permit to 4896 Pearl Road.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
A motion by Councilmember Harrison that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
Call the road.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palanick, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yeas, Mr. Chairman.
Call the road on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palanick, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yeas.
Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Orders number 1234-2023, as amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of economic development to enter a grant agreement with Urban Bridges, doing visits as envisioned in Cleveland, or as designated to provide economic development assistance to partially finance construction of a vocational training center. Orders number 1195-2023, by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, Harrison, and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the commission of purchases and supplies to sell city-owned air rights interest no longer needed for the city's public use located on Detroit Avenue addition to the West Boulevard Cadell Rapid Transit Station to Flaherty and College Development LLC for future residential development. Orders number 1187-2023, by Councilmembers McCormick, Bishop, Harrison, and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of capital projects to apply for and accept a grant from the United States Department of Transportation for the reconnecting Cleveland I-90 program, and authorizing the director to employ one or more professional consultants to implement the grant. Orders number 1022-2023, by Councilmembers Harrison and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Section 138.07 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 1266-02, passed January 27, 2003, relating to enhancing the city's ability to address nuisance properties. Orders number 1088-2023, by Councilmembers McCormick, Bishop, Harrison, and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance capping the consent of the City of Cleveland to the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio to demolish and remove the Eagle Avenue Lift Bridge over the Kiowa River in the City of Cleveland, authorizing agreements and causing payment to the state for the city's share of the improvement. Orders number 1158-2023, as amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of economic development to enter a grant agreement with Serenity Health and Wellness Corporation to provide economic development assistance to partially finance renovation of its youth home and behavioral health facility. Orders number 1189-2023, as amended by Councilmember Gray. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of economic development to enter into a grant agreement with building construction initiative or designated to provide economic development assistance to partially finance completion of renovation of commercial space for training in the construction trades. Orders number 1255-2023, by Councilmembers Bishop and Harrison, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of Public Works to execute a deed of easement granting to the Rest Creek Conservancy or the entity identified to accept conservation easements for certain easement rights in the property located at the Cleveland Enterprise Park in the Village of Highland Hills, and declaring that the easement rights granted are not needed for public use, and authorizing the city to enter into one or more agreements with the West Creek Conservancy or the entity identified to accept conservation easements to administer the conservation easement. Orders number 1270-2023, by Councilmembers Conwell, Harrison, and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to supplement, orders number 1074-2021, passed December 6, 2021, to add a new 11th whereas clause relating to one or more grant agreements with Hitchcock Center for Women Inc. to support the construction of a new residential treatment facility at 1227 Ansel Road. Orders number 1271-2023, by Councilmembers Harrison and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of community development to apply for and accept one or more grants from the city's financial empowerment fund, the Cleveland Citywide Development Corporation, and other public or private entities for the Bank On Fellowship Program. Orders number 1287-2023, by Councilmember Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of finance on behalf of the Cleveland Municipal Court to enter into one or more contracts with the Kiowa County Public Defender Commission for the legal services necessary to defend interested defendants charged with violation of ordinances of the City of Cleveland that may result in incarceration for the Cleveland Municipal Court for a period of one year, with one option to renew for an additional consecutive year exercisable for the director of finance. Orders number 1295-2023, by Councilmember Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of finance on behalf of the Cleveland Municipal Court to enter into one or more contracts with Orianna House Inc. for professor's services necessary to provide appropriate placement for defendants to be assigned and to supervise pretrial release without sanction of incarceration, and to provide related services for the Cleveland Municipal Court for a period of one year, with a one-year option to renew exercisable by the director of finance.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
Call the road.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palanick, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yeas, Mr. Chairman.
Call the road on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palanick, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer Starr. Fourteen yeas, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have legislation to be tabled. Read the legislation to be tabled.
Orders number 449-08, by Councilmembers Coats, Palanick, Johnson, Cleveland, Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Section 133.322 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 823-06, passed June 12, 2006, relating to the rental of the Collingwood Athletic Complex. Orders number 945-08, by Councilmember Sweeney. An emergency ordinance to amend Section 350.10 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 1282-06, passed November 27, 2006, relating to billboards. Orders number 1257-08, by Councilmembers Kelly, Simperman, and Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of Port Control to solicit proposals from qualified firms to undertake the management, design, and development of aviation and non-aviation-related services at selected Department of Port Control or city-owned properties and related facilities consistent with the airport's master plan, and to enter into one or more leases or leases by way of concession for a term of 30 years with two tenure options to renew subject to additional legislative approval. Orders, resolution number 1619-08, by Councilmembers Santiago, Brady, Simperman, and Sweeney, by Department of Request. An emergency resolution declaring the intent to vacate a portion of West 29th Street. Orders number 15-10, by Councilmember Palanick. An emergency ordinance rescinding the landmark designation of St. Joseph Christian Life Center on Lakeshore Boulevard. Orders number 731-10, by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance changing the use district of lands on the southeast corner of Literary Road and West 5th Street shown shaded on the shaded on the attached map to two family residential and a B area district, map change number 2316. Orders, seven, ordinance 735-10, by Councilmembers Simperman, and ordinance changing the use district of lands on the northwest and northeast corners of Kenworth and Literary Avenues at West 11th Street to local retail business, map change number 2313. Orders number 736-10, by Councilmembers Simperman, and ordinance changing the use in area districts, the lands on the south side of Starkweather Avenue between St. Ticonne Street and St. Olga Street, shown shaded on the shaded on the attached map to two family residential and a B area district, map change number 2315. Orders number 7738-10, by Councilmember Cleveland. An ordinance changing the use district of land located on the northeast corner of Woolen Avenue and East 75th Street to open space and recreation, map change number 2322. Orders 753-10, by Councilmember Mitchell. An ordinance changing the use area and height districts of lands located on the southeast corner of Notre Dame Avenue and Mount Carmel Road to a two-family residential district, a B area district, and a one-height district, map change number 2309. Resolutions number 124-12, by Councilmembers Palanick, Jeffrey Johnson, Mitchell, Branca Tally, Reed, Conwell, and Brady. An emergency resolution urging the administration's Department of Public Works to study and amend a fee structure for charging non-Cleveland residents for the use of city-including recreation centers, including the Collingwood Recreation Center. Orders number 848-12, by Councilmember Sweeney. An emergency ordinance to amend Section 555.111 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 1291-11, passed December 5, 2011, relating to settling down excessively large quantities of waste. Orders number 1080-13, by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located on northwest and southwest sides of Professor Avenue, West 10th Street, and Jefferson Avenue, including lands along College Avenue and Jefferson Avenue between Tremont Street and West 7th Street, as shaded and outlined on the attached map, map change number 2437. Orders number 1081-13, by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located around West 14th Street, Starkweather Avenue, and Auburn Avenue, as shown on the attached map, map change number 2438. Orders number 1082-13, by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Fairfield Avenue and West 11th Street, map change number 2439. Orders number 1083-13, by Councilmember Simperman. An ordinance establishing a pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Kinnon Avenue, Literary Road, and West 11th Street, map change number 2436. Orders number 1084-13, by Councilmembers Simperman. An ordinance establishing pedestrian retail overlay special sign district on lands located at the intersection of Professor Avenue and Starkweather Avenue, map change number 2441. Orders number 1223-13, by Councilmember Branca Tally. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections 509.01, 509.13, and 509.19 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as enacted by orders number 634-10-A, passed September 22, 1924, relating to tree planting permits and property owners' responsibility to trim or remove trees. Orders, 797-14, by Councilmembers Zone and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections 676.02 and 676.06 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by various ordinances relating to secondhand dealers. Orders number 598-15, by Councilmembers Dow, Kenneth Johnson, and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of Public Works to enter into one or more concession agreements with the operation of concession stands at the League Park Baseball Field and Visitor Center of the Department of Public Works for a period not to exceed three years. Orders number 646-15, by Councilmembers Dow, Kenneth Johnson, and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to supplement the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, by enacting new Section 131.38 relating to an annual commemorative day to celebrate the history of League Park and the Negro Baseball League. Orders number 750-15, by Councilmembers Zone and Conwell. An emergency ordinance to supplement the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, by enacting new Section 135.042 thereof relating to establishment of a policy with respect to bias-based profiling. Orders number 408-16, by Councilmember Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Section 37 of orders number 323-15, passed March 30, 2015, relating to compensation for various classifications. Resolution number 745-17, by Councilmembers Conwell and Zone. An emergency resolution supporting and urging Mayor Jackson's administration to continue developing a public safety department policy and training program to help police officers communicate and interact effectively with people who are deaf or hard of hearing. Orders number 1449-17, by Councilmember Dow. An emergency ordinance designating the Cleveland Akron Bank Company as a Cleveland landmark. Orders number 1450-17, by Councilmember Dow. An emergency ordinance designating the American Multigraph Company Building as a Cleveland landmark. Orders number 1452-17, by Councilmember Jeffrey Johnson. An emergency ordinance designating the Cleveland Aquarium as a Cleveland landmark. Orders number 199.18, by Councilmembers Zone and Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the submission to the electors of the City of Cleveland for a proposal to amend Sections 116 and 126 of the Charter of the City of Cleveland relating to the police force controlled by chief and division into classified and unclassified service. Resolution number 375-18, by Councilmember Conwell. An emergency resolution urging Mayor Jackson's administration to require special police forces to undergo racial bias and sensitivity training and report incidents of racial bias and profiling to the Department of Public Safety. Orders number 177-2020, by Councilmember Bushir Jones. An emergency ordinance changing the name of E.J. Kovac Recreation Center located at 6250 St. Clair Avenue to Muhammad Ali Recreation Center. Orders number 897-2020, by Councilmember Kelly, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to repeal Section 381.06 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 2392-02, passed February 3, 2003, to supplement the Codified Ordances 381.06 relating to fire protection, authorizing the director to enter into one or more for professional electronic data managers services related to ordinance. Resolution number 871-2021, by Councilmember McCormick. An emergency resolution supporting West Creek Conservancy's Cleveland, Ohio Fund Green Space Conservation Zachlon River Landing Project in the City of Cleveland. Orders number 393-2022, by Councilmembers. An emergency ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to enter into an agreement with Sean Chambers for consulting services regarding the use of Cleveland City Council discretionary funds. Orders number 526-2022, by Councilmembers Palanick and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections 451.03 and 459.11 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by orders number 656-17, passed October 16, 2017, and orders number 1693-06, passed October 9, 2006, relating to statutory prohibited parking for actions. Eighteen, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin, by Department of Request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections 131.78, 131.79, 401.33, 453.01, 453.02, 453.03, 453.04, 455.01, 455.05, 455.07, 455.09, and 455.10 of the Codified Ordances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, as amended by various ordinances related to parking rates, parking meters, and municipal parking facilities.
Read the motion to table the legislation.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison that the legislation just read be laid on the table, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
The chair acknowledges Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones.
You, just to the chair, please mark me on a no on all of them, please. Thank you.
Call the road.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Slyfe, Spencer Starr. Thirteen yeas, one aye, on tabling the legislation.
Thank you. Are there any introductions? Any introductions? Are there any announcements? Any announcements? Miscellaneous, Councilman Palanick? Announcement?
Mr. Chairman, acting clerk, and all members, don't forget, on Wednesday, 10 o'clock, we have four pieces of legislation at 10 o'clock in the Safety Committee, which are very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Charles Slyfe.
Thank you. Question if staff could review the recording for this evening's meeting and ensure if there's anything we need to do to make sure that the transcript for the first part is available and that the public who tuned in and is looking to know what occurred in city business is that that information is readily available and not unable to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other miscellaneous? Any other miscellaneous? Councilwoman House Jones, miscellaneous.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the president here. So, I've shared with people that I am in a fellowship. It's called the Ashay Leaders Fellowship. It's funded through Big Picture Learning. And last week was our first national convening. There are groups from Cleveland, Akron, Jackson, Mississippi, Oakland, California, and Detroit, Michigan, Baltimore, excuse me, Baltimore. And as part of our fellowship, we had an opportunity last week. I was in San Diego, and as a part of the experience, last Wednesday, we went and we visited the border. And our guides, it was Lily Flower and Nettie, they were just talking about their experiences. And when you read things, it talks about open-air detention centers. And so I was hearing them, but I didn't hear. You know what I'm saying? You hear stuff, but you don't think you fully grasp what they're talking about. And it was like, no, they take people, they leave them there, and then they come back to process them. And I wasn't, I just didn't understand. And so when we got there, they was like, well, it's prepare for the elements and all that stuff. So we went down there, you know, we dropped off like some water, some blankets and stuff like that. And when you go, we were at Whiskey Eight. That was the border that we were at. There were tents, kind of the pop-up tents, and then they had like some, you know, water and just different things of that nature. And so we were just, you know, we were there talking. There were two volunteers that were there. And then probably like, maybe like 10 minutes while we were there, there was a border patrol vehicle that came from this road that only they are allowed to go. The gate opened, and the car went in, and then they opened the doors, and it was a woman and her child that got out of the vehicle. And then the vehicle came back out. And so when you go there, so it is this 30-foot fence and just a sidebar. So they talked about the science of a 30-foot fence. The science behind it is that if you see 30 feet, there is something psychologically that goes to kind of intentionally break you so that you won't climb it and things of that nature. And it's a whole thing that's going on in their hospital systems about people like dying, well, really having some significant injuries of trying to climb the fence. But the thing that really struck me was they drop the mother and her child there, and that was it. So our government is literally, and they built another 30-foot wall. So people, when they talk about open-air detention center, they are legit just leaving people there with nothing. No bathroom, nothing to drink, nothing to eat, no elements. And I was like, what? And I just couldn't grasp this. And people are being left there for hours, days, weeks, and it's volunteers who are trying to feed people. And I'm just like, this is crazy. Like, it's just, and again, it started raining when we were there. And, you know, this narrative that we're having about the border, I was just like, whoa. Because one of the things they ask is that, please tell our story. Because most people don't know the story of what's happening at the border. We talk about it in such a cavalier way. Most people don't, in this open-air detention center, the first person that's recorded to have died there was a 29-year-old Ghanaian woman, right? Ghanaian is a part of Western Africa. So as we talk about these things, you know, coming through that specifically, that border, people from all over the world, from West African countries, from Asian countries, from Turkey, Ukraine, like, this is global. But the way it is portrayed is like, oh, no, it's just, you know, it's Mexicans, you know? And it's just, it's so disturbing of like what our country has embraced. And even when I was coming back home, I was having a conversation with a family member and how they were just spilling off some of their thoughts. And I was like, that's not true, right? And so I really wanted to take a moment to just share that because we are in a global society, and we have to find a way, a better way, because this is not it. I had cohort members who are undocumented to tell their stories and how, when they live, by national lives, what it looked like, like it wasn't like this just 20 years ago. The relationships between Tijuana and Americans and how people, you know, were just being able to go together. When you go down there to see the original border fence, it's like four feet. You know what I'm saying? And it's just, and we spend way too much money for things that are very harmful. So I just wanted to make sure that I took the time to lift it up. And then I'll close with this, you know, as part of the fellowship that we are in, you have the quote by Angela Davis, and I want to, you know, I was sharing it with Councilwoman Starr earlier together. But I want to leave it with our colleagues here as we go into '24, as I really did have an opportunity to have a lot of self-reflection. The quote by Angela Davis says, "I'm not accepting the things I cannot change, I'm changing the things that I cannot accept." And that is the spirit and the philosophy that I am going to have in this body, because there are some very things that are not, you know, we know it's things that are going wrong in Cleveland, there's things going on in San Diego and else places. And I really think that there's just something that in our power, the things that we can change, we absolutely need to have a sense of urgency to do so. So I thank you so much for that time, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Council lady. Is that it? Is it? Okay. That concludes this council meeting. Councillors adjourn to the next regular meeting. Oh, please excuse the absences.
By Councilmember, a motion by Councilmember Harrison that the absences of Councilmembers Conwell, Gray, and Santana are hereby excused, seconded by Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you.